For the reminder, alright.
This meeting is being recorded.
Nice, alright. So, okay, so negative sign, so let's say we have N bits, negative sign is two to the power of N minus one. Positive ten is two to the power of N minus one, minus one, on the side is two to the power of N, and then N minus one without the parentheses. Alright, so practice problems one, two, and three, let me know when you've got through that.
Yeah, sign just means that it can't be negative, right?
Yeah, sign means it can be negative, yeah.
Is two to the parentheses N minus one the same as two to the N minus one, or is the one in the unsigned like separate?
It's separate.
It's separate. Well, since unsigned can't be negative, I guess the lowest would be, well, if you put zero, two to the zero is one, one minus one is zero now.
But it's four bits.
Four bits.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, so negative sign would be, you got it? Just wanna.
No, not totally sure.
Okay, so negative sign would be two, so four is N, so we just plug into the power of four minus three, which is eight. And it's negative, so it's negative eight, does that make sense?
Yeah, wait, so you're plugging what into N?
Uh, four, the number of bits, yeah. And then positive sign is just that minus one, just seven, and then unsigned is two to the power of N minus one, so that's two to the power of four, which is sixteen, minus one, which is fifteen. That make sense?
But are, but doesn't it have to be like, uh, like, because if you're doing four bits, those four bits can be anything from zero to sixteen or fifteen, no? Like in.
Um. Yeah, it can be anything from zero here. Right, there we go, so. The highest negative number would be, uh, so it would be one, zero, 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 right?
Yeah.
Uh, the highest positive number would be zero, one, 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 what if it's unsigned, it'd be one, 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 one.
Yeah. And one. Cause the one, cause the one on the very left indicates negative, that's the sign bit, right?
Yeah, what if it's, yeah, but if it's unsigned, the one indicates not negative. Yeah.
But then the first, but in a one thousand, like a one, zero, 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 uh, with the sign bit, that would be, uh, like a negative, no, oh, yeah. Then, okay, okay. Because like you, like the one, like, in general, one, zero, zero, zero is eight, but if you're using the sign bit, then that means negative eight, okay.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, alright, just let me know anytime if you have any questions, alright. Uh, decimal, octal, and hex, two binary, uh, yeah, um, two binary, you just figure, you just like divide by two and then.
Yeah.
Um, octal, three, three digits starting from the right, convert to octal, for hex, it's each four digits starting from the right. And then for octal, it's just basically decimal, so like you convert the last three digits to decimal. And then hex is decimal until, uh, ten, which is then A, and then it goes B eleven, C twelve, et cetera. And then extend signs, you just add ones to the left if it's a negative, um, otherwise if it's positive. If positive, just add zeros.
Yeah, and then usually to convert, do you take the, like, the base number, whether it's, uh, two, or ten, or sixteen? Or, or eight, and then you do like to the zero, to the one, to the two, and then you, that's how you kind of, then you write down what it represents on top, I guess.
That doesn't make sense to me, but if it makes sense to you, that's what matters.
Yeah, because for example, you have two to the zero, then two to the one, then two to the two, and then you write down. Like that stuff, and you add it, and then that's like to convert to decimal, and then you can use that to convert back to hexer.
Yeah, okay, um, yeah, practice problems invite twenty-five to octal, hex showed negative one and sixteen bits. I just let me know when you get done with that.
Yeah, I need to get a pencil and paper, I don't even know where.
I started doing this in a stupid way and I forgot to stop every time I hit seven. So for example, I'd take, uh, like I can do like seven to the zero, and then seven to the one, and then seven squared, seven to the zero.
Oh, are you doing seven?
Yeah, good, that's octal, no, oh, no, it has to be eight, eight, sorry.
Yeah, um, I converted it from to binary and then octal from there, that might be easier. Um, do you want me to show you how I did it?
Yeah, uh, no, cause on binary you have one, two, four. Eight, sixteen, so twenty-five would be sixteen, and then eight gives you twenty-four, and. So that's one, one, zero, zero, one, right?
Oh, yeah, one, one, zero, zero, one, yeah.
Yeah, one, one, zero, zero, one, and an octal, an octal, it's every three, three bits?
Yeah.
Yeah. But if that, but if that's just, uh, five bits, I guess I have to add a zero to the, uh, to the left to make it so I can divide it into two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so then that's. One, so it's three, and then one.
Yep.
Or, yeah, okay. And then in hex, you just do it by fours.
Yeah.
So that's just zero, and then one, two, four, and then twelve, right?
Uh, it'd be nineteen, I can show you. Yeah, so hex, so we have one, one, zero, zero, one, so zero, zero, one. One, zero, zero, one, so it'd be one, and then. Uh, this is, so one, zero, zero, one equals nine, right?
Yeah.
So it's nine.
Okay.
Yeah. And then for number two, do you think you know that?
So negative one, 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 one.
Well, it's just like one, two, four, eight, sixteen, no, but since that's, since that's five bits, I'm supposed to have this memorized by now, but. Because if you, because four bits, that goes up to, I think the highest there is sixteen, and then if you add another one, that's like one, two. Being thirty-two.
Are, okay, okay, so, one, 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 one is the binary code in five bits for negative one, does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, by why, why exactly? Cause you have the, the, the first one represents the negative and.
Yeah, so be, uh, it'd be negative thirty-two, or negative. Okay, so it'd be one, two, four, eight, sixteen, so it'd be negative sixteen plus eight plus four plus two plus one.
Uh, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, and then to extend that into sixteen bits, you just keep adding ones to the left of it, so it's just sixteen ones, does that make sense?
Yeah, well, wouldn't that be, would it had to be zero, but what, adding more ones, like change the number or?
No, to extend a signed bit, you just add whatever's the left most bit, you just extend that to the left.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wait, did it just be a bunch of ones?
Yep, just sixteen ones.
Okay.
Yep, alright. And then convert decimal numbers with decimal places to binary, convert twenty-five point one, two, five to binary.
Well, then we just said, uh, that was the one.
Yeah, what was it? One, one, zero, zero, one.
Zero, yeah, and the point one, two, five, I know that the first, uh, the first decimal bit is like a half, and then it's a quarter, and then. An eighth, so in this case, it wouldn't be a half or a quarter, I don't think it would be an eighth either, or is that an eighth?
Uh, yeah, it'd be one eighth, one.
Yeah, so it'll be zero, zero, point zero, 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 one.
Yeah, uh, zero, zero, one.
One, one, zero, zero, point, yeah.
Yeah, nice, that's the answer. Alright, uh, convert two and from IE seven, five, four, so convert twenty-five point one, two, five to IE seven, five, four.
Oh, yeah, this is with, uh, the normalizing the mantissa.
Yeah.
I had to look up that worksheet, I forgot, I saw the lecture yesterday, but I had to look it up here.
Alright, do you want me to show you how to do it then?
Yeah, yeah, you can do that.
Okay, so first, we convert twenty-five to one, two, five to binary, we did this. Find the mantissa, so you move the decimal four spots to the left, so you wanna get to the one, and you wanna move it one to the right of that. Yeah, and so.
That you moved, it is one twenty-seven plus the amount moved.
Yeah, one thirty-one, and then we convert one thirty-one to binary, which is the best, that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, alright, and then we combine, uh, sign, so that mantissa is one, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, one.
Yeah.
Right, so, the sign is positive, so zero plus exponent, it goes that. Plus the mantissa, which is this.
Yeah.
And then we fill the rest with zeros for thirty-two bits, and we convert to hex.
And to convert to hex, you always do it like four bits at a time, right?
Yeah, four bits at a time, so this is, that's why I separated it so weirdly.
Yeah.
These four, these four, these four, these four, these four, these four, and then these four.
Yeah.
And then for negative twenty-five point one, two, five, it's the exact same, but we just have, uh, one instead of a zero for the sign.
Right.
Okay, uh, two's complement, we reverse every single bit, and then we add.
And add one.
Yeah, so I could, alright, tracking running one hundred to two's complement.
Yeah, so one hundred, I know that the, the one for ten is easy, cause like as Guy Tress was saying, it's just one, zero, one, zero, it's like twice, but for one hundred. So that would be one, two, four, eight, sixteen, thirty-two, sixty-four, then sixty-four plus, I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, so it'd be sixty-four plus thirty-two.
Right.
Sixteen plus eight, or sixty-four plus thirty-two, no sixteen, no eight, uh, four, two, one.
Right.
Yeah, so it'd be that, and then that's, that's in binary, how do you convert that to two's complement?
Yeah, so it would, that would be first, zero, zero, one, one, zero, one, one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so this is signed, actually, so it'd be one, zero, zero, one, one, zero, one, one, right?
Yeah, uh, and then add one, so that would be, the first one would be zero with a one carrier. And then. What was it again, the, the first?
Um, so, okay, so it's one, one, zero, zero.
Yeah.
Uh, one, zero, zero.
Okay, yeah, let me do that.
Yeah, and then we revert, RB zero, one, one, zero, zero, actually, cause it's signed, so one, zero, zero, one, one, zero, one, one, and then we plus one. And then equals.
Yeah, hold on, one, zero, zero, one, one, zero, one, one, so then you add one, it'll be. Zero, one, carry, zero, one, carry, one. I think I got one, zero, zero, one, 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 zero, zero.
Uh, let's look at the answer, um, yeah, one, zero.
One, 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 zero, zero, yeah.
And then you just extend the left most bit.
Yeah.
Alright, so, no, I identify if it's overflow, so if it's the wrong sign.
Yeah, it's overflow.
Yeah, and if there are extra ones at the end, we literally just disregard those.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, so try, do you wanna try these three, or, yeah?
I think I'm good for now, but.
Okay, uh, yeah, answers are on the slides if you ever want to practice.
Okay, okay.
Latch in a flip-flop, uh, output. So for the latch, output always changes with the input, for a flip-flop, they wait, it waits for a signal from, for example, the clock. And it only changes when that, when the input tells it to, does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense.
Alright, sync, S and R in a latch, S states, sets the state to one, R is reset the state to zero.
Right, yeah.
Uh, given a single bit, so first you wanna know the following symbols, just in case like they show it, uh, and, or, X, or.
Yeah, I got those down.
Yeah, um, there's no example question on this, so it's a little confusing, but I assume one, one question with this be like. If A equals zero and B equals one, and the OP equals one, what is the result? So the operation is one, so we go to the or.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so.
The result would be, yeah, like A or B.
Yeah. Um, knowing eight great architecture ideas, um, practice assignment one and quiz one, cause those have practice questions, but for now, I know this is a question from exam one, list them. Um, yeah. Uh, can you list?
Yeah, that's the hierarchy of memories, make the common case, fast, pipelining, abstraction. Do you have your memories? Yeah, I, I got, I got that question right on the test, but.
Nice. Parallelism.
Parallelism, prediction.
Uh, abstraction, redundancy. It's fast, hierarchy, memories, Moore's law.
Uh, Moore's law, Moore's law, right.
And then, yeah, okay, uh, identify the equation in some products, from quiz eight, question nine, which one is it?
Some products form, so, I think it's the first one, though.
Yep, correct, nice, uh, Boolean algebra laws with example, just like, it's quiz ten, question eight, memorize that and profit, that's it.
Okay, yeah, nah, I'm gonna go through all the quizzes again.
Yeah. I think like the last, I mean, I, I'll go through the quizzes, but like, I think for the last, I won't go through them, cause like none of the, none of that content is on the study guide. So, so I'm not gonna waste my time learning that.
Yeah.
Uh, programming a lot, logic array looks like, this is what a program logic, it has like, so it has like these three, it has a bunch of.
Yeah.
Things at the left, has a shit ton of lines, and then has a bunch of stuff right here, as a bunch.
And then the very last one is the, the last and for the F, yeah.
Uh, one bit multiplexer, so it always, multiplexer has one output, decoder has multiple outputs. And a multiplexer has a select thing in addition to the.
Yeah, it's, it's just thing that selects, yeah, and then the decoder takes the input to the power of something.
I don't know, it's, the decoders are not on the study guide, so.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, three bit gray codes, you wanna give me the three bit gate? Do you wanna try to get?
Yeah, I have this, it was zero, zero, one, then, no, yeah, zero, 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 one, zero, one, one. Uh, I think zero, one, zero. Then one, one, zero, then one, one, one. Maybe one, zero, one. Then one, zero, zero.
Yep, that's it, good stuff, yeah, so, it al, it only changes one at a time, that's good.
Exactly, yeah.
And then if it's just ones, if it's like one like this, you just add one to the left like that.
Exactly.
Um, and then, before adding one to the left like that, you wanna make sure you have it in this spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just gotta figure out a way for you to get it.
Yeah, yeah, I kinda just memorized it a bit and it was fine.
How do you turn from a mid function call, it's two words. Or, yeah.
Uh, I mean, usually to end the program, I do JR, then dollar sign RA, but I'm not sure.
Perfect, yep, good.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, JAL and JAL, JAL R.
Yeah, I was just trying to look that up yesterday, it's jump and link, and then jump and link something, and I'm not totally sure.
So, yeah, jump and link is, so they all, they both would jump in, jump to a specific.
Another subroutine.
Spot, yeah, part of the program, JAL R is for, uh, if you wanna spec, it's JAL, but it specifies a return address.
Okay, return.
Yeah, yeah, so like when you go back, uh, you know, you go back to the JAL, JAL R, or JAL R should slide it to. Uh, add, add IU, add you, and add IU.
Yeah, that's, uh, the add, the add I is add, uh, signed, there's like unsigned and unsigned integer.
Or, okay, so add is just basic add, add versus add I, add I is add immediate, so you add.
Immediate, immediate, yeah, like with a, like a constant, like a literal.
Yeah, and add would be like with a register.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, add was add you and add I versus add IU, um, add you and add IU, those mean that there can't be overflow.
Yeah, so unsigned, so it tracks the, the signed or unsigned, yeah.
Well, you can still add signed numbers with add.
But it ignores the overflow.
Yeah, or, no, well, add you ignores overflow, add does not, add can result in overflow, add you cannot.
Yeah, add you like takes into account the overflow.
Yes, I think so, okay, how to line code and forward boundary, what is it?
Yeah. Uh, I, I knew this, it was on the quiz.
Dot align two.
And I think it was align something.
Dot align two.
Dot, dot align two, yeah.
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 Alright, difference between a branch and a jump, do you know this?
Yeah, a branch goes to another sub, no, 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 the branches, like when you have to compare, I, I think, when you have to do a comparison. And then jump is like, and jump is like, it always jumps regardless of, you know.
Yeah, I think you have the gist of it for the most part, yeah, so a branch is relative to local spots, like, it starts at this. At a spot in memory, and then it goes like forward in memory or back in memory, uh, and jumps, they go, they just jump to a specific spot, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, what registers are used to return, do you know this?
Uh, this was with the M, MVC, something like that, and the. And, and then MF, I don't know.
Which registers, those are, yeah.
Yeah, it was like, it was like MVC or something like, I don't remember.
So how I like to think about it?
Oh, the registers, yeah, that's dollar sign F one to F twelve.
No, alright, so integer, so re- receive equals return, so we're receiving. So for integers, that's V zero, for floats, that's F zero.
Right.
Right?
Oh, and then they can, then I think it has to be an F one to do the conversion to end, or, or has to be moved to F one.
I think this is just all we need, and it does, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and then which registers are used to send?
Can we use this?
Send equals print, so before you print a integer, what register do you load it to?
Yeah, everything's with V zero, so before you do this, it's call, I think.
A zero.
Yeah. A, A, zero, oh, yeah, that's the address.
Yeah, and then for floats, which one is it?
Uh, I think it's F twelve?
F twelve, yep, correct.
Yeah, F twelve, yeah.
Yeah. What do you register zero and R is for?
Yeah, zero, zero just means the literal zero, and then RA is to end the program.
Uh, at the return address, it does not. Yeah, yeah, uh, how to print a string in MIPS, it's L I V zero four, L A A zero message, that's all. Yeah, just remember that, how to multiply and divide, do you know?
Yeah, that was with that, I think you use div or div U, and then you have to do.
By shifting.
Yeah, oh, by shifting, I don't remember.
So shift left multiplies by two?
Uh, shift, oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah. That make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Got it, alright, what are the steps in single cycle, cycle architecture, so give me the names and, uh, the.
Uh, there was.
Abbreviation.
Instruction, decode, instruction, uh, execute, and then save.
Yeah, bet you could execute.
You, uh, save.
Right, memory.
Right, uh, memory.
R. And memory. Right back.
Right.
IA, ID.
Instruction, fat, instruction, decode, execute.
Yep, right.
Yeah.
And then. To, okay, so I copy paste this about two times, um. Each instruction, which can contain either directive, instruction, and a comment, each instruction in MIPS can contain a directive, instruction, and a comment, just like. Memorize this.
Yeah.
Alright, um, how many times faster when computer, it's. Okay.
Oh, yeah, this was with the, there was some formula, I forgot. The computer A takes ten seconds, fifteen seconds, oh, then that would be, how many times faster is computer A? Was it, wouldn't that be like, uh, for a hundred fifty percent, or something like, I don't know.
So just be, so computer A is one point time, one point five times faster, does that make?
Okay, yeah, it's almost like hundred fifty percent, but yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry, I thought you said like four point five, okay. Yeah, so it's like, how else would you do it?
Yeah.
That's why I didn't even like.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so know the prefixes, rate equals one over period, period is second, and rate isn't hurt, so you wanna like memorize this image, would be my.
Yeah.
Recommendation.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and then, uh, okay, if the period is four picoseconds, what is the frequency in gigahertz?
Uh, here you had to, I think you had to convert to seconds. On my, this computer has two percent battery, I have to get the charger.
Alright, always.
Yeah, so we have to convert that to seconds first, I don't remember, cause I know that gigahertz is like a, a million or a billion hertz.
Uh, gigahertz is ten to the power of nine, picos ten to the power of negative four.
Yeah. Don't remember if we had to multiply or divide one of those.
Uh, period, frequency equals one over period.
Alright. The periods are ten to the negative twelve, right?
Uh, yep.
Yeah. That's one trillion, which I think is ten to the nine, now.
Yeah, gigahertz, ten to the nine.
Yeah, so. Wait, is that, is that the answer or is there something else?
Um, so it's one, okay, I'll show you, so, peak, uh, so one over four times ten to the power of negative twelve.
Uh.
And then you just convert it, so, and that's two fifty.
Okay, let me see, frequency to gigahertz.
Yeah, just let me read this, let me know if it makes sense.
Yeah. Like, can I see the, the original question again?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, for picoseconds.
Yeah.
Sure.
Alright, makes sense?
Yeah.
Alright, awesome, uh, four bit, um, do you wanna go through this, or do you want me to show you?
Yeah, I think I got that down.
Okay, um, yeah, and steps for multiplication, and plus one steps for division, you just gotta memorize the steps. Um, so for multiplier, if the multi, if the right bit of the multiplier is one, you add the multiple plan to the product, if not, you just. And then you always shift the multiply right, one to the right, multiply and one to the left, uh, div, division, remainder minus divisor, if it's. Lower than, if it's less than zero, uh, do nothing, if it's greater than zero, uh, keep it, always shift the quotient to the left by one. If the, if remainder by minus divisor is positive, you keep the one, if not, you remove the one, divisor, you always shift that to the right.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Alright, and then, yeah, we're done, things to remember, no matter what, you're going to be okay, right, it's all good. Um, we've been dealt some shitty cars this year, it's been a tough ass class, um, but, yeah. And, uh, your best is always good enough, that's something to remember, um, take care of yourself, do what you feel is best, you got this. In the words of Ziz, we're all gonna make it.
Yeah, definitely.
Alright, man, thanks for showing up, have a great rest of your day.
Yeah, sucks that no one else came, but I guess.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll host the slides in the group me, uh, I'll post the video in the group me, and then I'll see you, man, good luck. Yeah, I'll just, I'll post the slides in the group me, uh, I'll post the video in the group me, and then I'll see you, man, good luck.
Alright, thanks so much, man, too.
Yeah, see you.